September 17th, this is the Curriculum and Evaluation Committee. It is now 6:08, and we are in the North Boardroom. Ms. Van Tuyger is here. Ms. Raymond is here. Ms. Timmons is not here. Ms. Porter, you will have a vote tonight if we need it.
Okay.
We have Mr. Dr. McKinney, and we have Mrs. Oden. And we have Ms. Hoensie. How about that? I got them all right.
Uh huh.
Okay. Tonight, we have three things on our agenda. Well, actually, two. We have a professional development plan for the 2018-19 school year. And then we have, we're going to have an update on teaching cursive writing and handwriting. So, Dr. McKinney, if you would like to begin your presentation.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And thank you for the opportunity to talk about professional development, the district plan for this year, 18-19. The guidance for our professional development in the district comes from our professional development master plan, 2016 to 2021. On the screen here and included in your packet, you can see the mission statement for the Nashville School District, along with the introduction from the PDMP, as we call it, for our master plan for PD for this year and going forward. Big picture, in talking about the district and the strategy for engaging in professional learning across the district, at the district level, the district office, along with our curriculum team, determines focus areas for the district as a whole. Then we share those with the school leaders. They add more specific site-based details to move the work forward. The administrators share those goals across their schools and departments. And then we ask teachers to align their professional development goals to the PD goals that are running in the district, as well as goals or areas that they come to from their teacher development and evaluation system, the annual evaluations that happen on a regular basis. For this school year, some of the district-wide focus areas include the following. Obviously, safety training, continuing from the work last year. I believe members got a copy of the schedule moving forward at the elementary and middle school levels. Also, another focus area is social-emotional learning. I apologize, I didn't bring my book with me, but I'll share. We have a book study beginning with our leadership team. That would include all principals, APs, directors, and assistant directors on the components of social-emotional learning, with the expectation that, at the end of the year, they have some action plans to carry the work forth at the building level. And then we'll continue that work next year, and then work towards the classroom level, where we hope to have the majority of this work take place. So aside from SEL at the elementary level, we have a literacy and math focus, two goals in those two areas. At the middle school, our humanities coach has put together a goal for that department, along with a writing goal. The middle school's supporting the next-gen science standards that we spoke about before, and the pilot of resources being done at that level. This year, we've moved Eureka up into the middle school, grades six through eight. So that will be a continued focus for the year, as well as the three middle schools engaging in competency-based education. At the high school level, we do have the NIASC accreditation happening at North. And some of their other focus areas include writing across the curriculum, along with ongoing work by the headteachers in horizontal and vertical alignment of the curriculum. So with 1,000 teachers, pre-K to 12, we have a number of department areas and content areas. So here is a slide that speaks to some of the other work that is happening there. Starting from our youngest learners and educators, social-emotional learning at the preschool level. We're doing some work on mindfulness and self-regulation, as well as play-based learning and ongoing assessment for early intervention with our little ones. Our English as a Second Language Department is working on a resource called Elevation. Also, ongoing work on parent outreach and language proficiency towards growth and fluency at their levels. Our guidance department has been leading social-emotional learning, as well as the impact of trauma and responding to stressors and causes of anxiety in our student population. So our lead guidance team has been coordinating some of that and had input into the SEL work that's being driven across the district this year. Next, we have some of our UAs. Many of them are focused on stairs-based grading, again, social-emotional learning. Our very talented music department always does a great job every year with Nashville Sings and Nashville Plays. Mr. Sousa does a nice job. And they are doing some curriculum review, and also they've obtained some more technology. So that is a focus for their work this year. The PE department is working on curriculum alignment, that gigantic acronym up there for you. Here is the New Hampshire Alliance of Health, Physical Education, Recreation, and Dance. They have a group that goes to that conference every year and comes back and shares their learning from that to move our district forward. And they also have some technology components that they're looking into. Our library is going to be collaborating with the Nashville Public Library on the success of our summer reading program this year. They're going to be hosting a couple of meetings at the public library as well. And we're working on updating our curriculum in library media as well. As some of you may be aware, the CTE has a monitoring phase going on this year, so they'll be revisiting the work overall. And they have a number of joint department meetings scheduled for NTC and CTE. Special education is moving forward with the compliance monitoring. Again, the visit from the Department of Education, the State Department of Education, last year gave us some feedback. So Mrs. Bagley and her team will be moving that work forward this year. Rethink is a program that's in our intensive needs, so we're trying to be consistent across the schools and districts. So they'll be providing professional development with that. Again, SEL, and I apologize again for the acronym, CPI, is the Crisis Prevention Institute or Intervention. That's our de-escalation strategies for dealing with students who are escalated or elevated in their behavior. I've been meeting with a group of paraprofessionals over the last six months and organizing some professional development for them to meet their needs. So again, they'll be participating in safety training, learning the basics of X2 and Aspen, how to register for workshops, how to keep track of their offerings, how to track. Some of them are HQT, and they have to meet certain criteria, so how they can use the program to keep track of their certification requirements. They've asked for more training on our elementary curriculum, so they can help the kids they work with, and ongoing help and support with behavior management, because a number of them are dealing with some challenging students and behavior. New this year, we'll be meeting with our secretaries as a cohort, along with some representatives from technology on consistency with their practice in terms of registering students, maintaining the data pace all the way through from, basically preschool all the way until graduation. We've had some new people there, so we're just trying to be consistent, so that when kids move throughout the district, those records are consistent and accurate. And as I spoke about before, we are, have some focus areas for our admin as well. I spoke about SEL. We have a presentation for closing the achievement gap. And we have some book studies going on, the two books that are up there. One is Learning in the Fast Lane, which are, some of our assistant principals are reading right now, and that is the book that we framed new teacher orientation around, and the one that is being utilized in cohorts by our peer coaches from Diane and Paula with all our beginning, veteran, and alt candidates. So just speaking to the two models or two types that are out there, so this is included in our PDMP, but there's two ways to classify professional development. There's the formal and job-embedded. And formal is probably the part that most people think of, the traditional workshops, seminars, courses, institutes, that people attend and go to, like if you were just to sign up and go to a conference. The job-embedded or the informal ones are the ones that I'll speak to in, actually in two slides. So our formal professional development actually started over the summer. We had over 300 educators participate in summer professional development, either here in the district or outside the district. For example, we sent a team to Great Mines in Eureka, the middle school level, because they were initiating this work. So our math coach, our math curriculum specialist, and we tried to get representation from sixth, seventh, and eighth grade at the middle schools, so they would be there and be familiar with the work and to help and support both their colleagues at the grade level and across the district. We offer formal PD on the early release days, in-service days, and those can look like workshops, seminars, courses, or institutes. So the second part is informal. So we're fortunate, we have a lot of talented people in the district. So all the curriculum specialists, the coaches, headteachers, when teachers engage with them on lesson study, grade-level collaboration, examining student work, all of those would count in terms of professional development, and they could use that in terms of documenting that experience for their recertification. They can form PLCs, they can have a book study. There's a desire for more peer observations across the district, because teachers like to see other teachers in action, and just even picking up the smallest tips can really make a difference for them. And obviously, with the emergence of technology, there's all other informal ways, from webinars to podcasts, and just good old reading, writing, and journaling are always good ones to have as well. So looking ahead, we have seven early release days. You can see them all here. We provide professional learning for the district's 1,000 teachers. This would account for about 12 to 14 hours of professional learning for educators. The focus areas that we spoke to will be carrying the work forward on these days and providing teachers with an agenda and advance notice of what to bring and what to expect. As you all are aware, we have two in-service days. First, this year, we changed the rotation, if you will, the order, I guess that's a better way to say it. So our November day is what we call our choice day. Teachers on those days, on choice day, have three options. They can attend workshops all day long, so we offer a number of offerings for teachers to engage in. That's one choice. The second choice is they can design a professional learning plan around goals that they want to be working on that meets their need, and they can work on that for the full day. Or the middle one would be a little bit of both, so you could do a hybrid. You could go to a workshop for the morning, and then meet with your grade-level team and work on Eureka, or Lucy Hawkins, or whatever is happening in the science department. And then the second day in February is more district-driven, so it's opportunities for educators to increase their knowledge. Again, we provide options, and we partner with the headteachers, department coordinators, UAs, curriculum specialists, coaches, to outline professional learning for the teachers across the district. The other opportunities for professional learning include, the group I just met with today is our PDMP group. Their responsibility is carrying forth the professional development master plan and all the components, so everything I've shared with you so far, in terms of the early release days, the in-service, the forms that are necessary for completion, the binder recertification process, and so forth. A subgroup of that is the Teacher Development and Evaluation System. They are the lead for, basically, developing and evaluating all our teachers across the district, and leading the, not only the education, but the formation of the rubrics that teachers and administrators use to evaluate their performance. Everything from traditional classroom teacher to speech and language, special education, peer coaches, nurses, headteachers. We have rubrics for all those subgroups that are used for their evaluation every year. And then we have our traditional four content areas, steering committees that meet at least three to five times a year, and they have K to 12 representation on it, including our coaches, our headteachers, and then other teachers in the district. Just speaking to some new pieces this year, the November 6th day, although it is a choice day, we are looking to title that day something different, Learn, Lead, Innovate. Teachers are invited. It's not mandatory, because this has been in practice for a while. What we're hoping to do is create an atmosphere of, instead of all our teachers going to a conference, we're going to have a conference come to them. So if teachers would like, they're invited to come to one of the high schools for that day. And we're going to offer some keynote speakers. We'll offer AM and PM workshops. But we're going to end the day with a learning fair, where we can share the learning that happens across the district that day. And hopefully, everybody walks away with one piece of new knowledge. And that's basically our hope. In the past, all these things happened in isolation, so people stayed in their buildings, worked on Lucy Hawkins with their second-grade team. But a second-grade team on the other side of the district could be working on the same thing and not sharing what they're doing. So what we're asking and inviting them to do is come to one place, let's all share the work we're doing, let's get better together, let's have lunch together, and then at the end, have a little cookie and a coffee and some sharing, because, you know, we have a lot of talented people here, but there's, I don't think we all have to be working on the same thing. We could share the work together. So that's one new piece for this year. And then the other piece is a district membership to Learning Forward. It's a national organization that has standards for professional learning. And included in that membership is an opportunity to do a standards assessment inventory, which gets to the perception and information on professional learning from teachers. This information can help use, be used by the PDMP to design future professional development. It can be used at the district level for the same purpose. It can be used at the school level to help carry forth initiatives there. If you were writing a school improvement plan, you would certainly want to know what kind of PD to provide to your teachers. The nice thing is, we get data based on the survey completion, and we also get a consultant who can help guide us to provide recommendations. So that group that you saw earlier, the PDMP, has done this work before. It's a tremendous amount of work to both develop the surveys, calculate all the assessments, and carry forth the work. But this organization is there to, basically, elicit feedback from teachers, what's the level of professional learning, and provide some recommendations for us to grow and get better. So in meeting with the PDMP today, they'd like to give this an opportunity to move our work forward and see how we all can grow and learn and get better together. So our last two slides, I just want to thank all the people that are up here, because a district this large, we can't coordinate professional development with a lot of help, from the coaches, to the directors, to technology, to, I'm probably leaving some people out, but we really, it's a team effort to coordinate the number of teachers and specific content area needs that are in such a large district like this. So I just want to thank all of them for their work and their consistent effort. And then lastly, I shared with the committee today is, there's a new email here. If anybody has any questions, ideas, feedback around professional development, they can email to this address, and we'll bring it to the PDMP, the group, and we'll meet and discuss it and respond to their concerns, because it's a group effort. You know, we're not trying to do, or leave anybody behind. We can always offer more and different PD to meet the needs of the teachers. So, thank you.
Yep. Thank you very much, Dr. McKinney. Let the record show that Mr. Kaufman came in at 6:10, he joined us. I have some questions. Let me see if I can read my handwriting. Oh, first of all, in the focus areas slide, ELL, E L, Elevation. Can you explain that in a little bit more detail, please?
I'll try to do that as I'm scrolling backwards. So ELL is a resource, not only for the ELL department, but also classroom teachers in the district. And what it does is provide teachers with an understanding of the performance of ELL students, so where they are with their current assessments from the ELL department, as well as some strategies they can use to meet the needs of those students, along with an online resource of modeling lessons and print lessons and resources, basically. In the absence of not having a tremendously large ELL department that can do that, this is a vehicle for teachers to know what would work for a group of kids. So if I'm a middle school teacher, teaching language arts, and I have 12 ELL kids, the program would let me know where their latest performance is, what are some strategies I can do to reach them and be successful, and some video modeling of what those lessons would be, excuse me, and then some printouts of resources I can use with them. So it's a resource for all our teachers.
All the teachers, including the ELL group and the general public, I would say, the general, the general teaching.
General classroom teachers, yep.
Classroom teachers. It sounds very good. Would you, let's see, I wanted to comment on the music Nashville sings and Nashville plays, because they really do a remarkable job. It's one of my favorite things, is music, so that one I really liked. On the focus areas, under special education, you have compliance monitoring. Could you tell me a little bit more of that, compliance with what? The...
So on a regular basis, the Department of Education comes and does a compliance check in meeting all their special education policies and regulations, writing annual goals, meeting, being in compliance with all the meeting notifications, writing individual education plans, obtaining parent signatures, doing their written prior notice, all of those things. So they went through a series, a long year, of trainings and professional development and compliance visits, under Chris Breen's leadership last year, and of course, Mrs. Bagley was there as well. And now, this year, they're just kind of taking the work and the results of that one step further.
There's nothing that we're not in compliance with right now? I kind of got the impression.
No, we had very good results. Yep, it's just refining the work.
All right. And then, under the paraprofessionals, behavior management. I hope that that is a strong professional development, because I know that things can be very disorienting in the classroom, not only at the elementary level, but at high school, too, with the cellphone stuff and everything. That was one of the things when I was on the education, what was that group I was on for the?
Ed Council.
Ed Council, thank you, that was brought up, that they were having trouble with the use of cellphones. So I think that's rather important. Then, let's see, I'll give everybody a chance when I get a few to ask their questions, as soon as I get mine out here. I don't think I have many more. The schedule for the 2018-19 slide, informal professional development, all these different things can happen. I assume one teacher would not be involved in all those things? Is this a voluntary process, the informal professional development, so that they can pick whatever they like to improve upon? Or is it that it happens because of the way teachers and schools work?
I'm not clear on your question, but I think the answer is both. So if I was a sixth-grade math teacher, and I had a PLC meeting with the math coach there, then I would be participating in that, and I could carry that work forth and count it towards my recertification. If I wanted to meet with all the sixth-grade math teachers after school and carry that work forward, that I could count that as part of my professional learning and document it towards my recertification as well.
So it's, they can pick and choose, or they can, they're exposed to different things, not all of these things in a year? Like the book study, you said that there were two books that they're going to be studying. I hope I made that interesting. On the early release days, have the topics been selected yet for each one of these release days?
Yes. The second to the last slide, with all the people I was thanking for all their work at the beginning of the year, myself and Ms. Fitzpatrick send out a framework for the year, and they submit agendas, where they're going to be, what they're going to be doing for all those days in departments. So yes.
So on the, I remember getting some information one time, where there were a list of different things that a teacher could take or participate in. Is that the same thing that this is, that it's, you put out a number of topics that some of our people are teaching, and they sign up for that? Is that, or does everybody on October 17th take the same professional development?
Oh, okay. So on the early release days, it would look very similar for the fourth-grade teachers across the district. On the November in-service day, where it's a choice, it would look different, because they can either attend a workshop, they can even present a workshop, or they can be working on a personalized learning plan of a goal that they have on their own.
Okay. That's, I guess the question, too, is how much money is in the budget for professional development? I think we had a conversation last year that you didn't have much money, and I'm wondering if you've got plenty this time?
I don't remember the number off the top of my head. There is some money being used from the operating budget, as well as money from Title II.
From Title II.
Yeah.
I like the two new additions. I think they're very, very innovative for us. When the Learning Forward is completed, and the survey, will you share that with the board?
Yeah, sure.
Very good. I'd like to see that. I think that's about all I have. Who, are there other questions? Anybody on the committee have any questions for him? Okay. It's quite all right.
I was just trying to find the page.
Yeah.
So I'm just curious about the certification and recertification. Is there a minimum number of hours that they have to meet? Or is it, you know, a particular proficiency in some, you know, area of research? What's the requirement?
So our system, we don't run on clock hours. It's not, it's based on evidence and reflection. So they are required to fill out a number of forms, document their reflection, and include artifacts or evidence to go along with that. And the building principals or assistant principals are the ones that are a part of that process, along with the peer coaches, and then eventually, it comes to the curriculum office, the district office.
Okay. Thank you.
Mrs. Oden, this was your subject matter that you wanted presented. Do you have any questions?
I think Dr. McKinney has been very thorough with this, so, no, I don't have any questions. I think he's done a good job with this.
Okay. Over here on this side, yeah, Mrs. Hoensie, and then Mr. Kaufman.
I've got a couple. So the social-emotional learning, I'm trying to understand if there are assessments or surveys involved. Is there professionals involved in the implementation? This is something that the board, I would think, since it's mentioned many times in the presentation, should have a presentation on, so we know what it is that's, you know, that's involved.
If you'd like to make a request, I suggest that you go through the chair for future topics for the curriculum evaluation meeting, in terms of, what is your question in regards to?
I want to know, how is it presented? Is this in part of the courses? Is it a separate item that, I mean, it looks like it was in an art course, it was in various different things. So I'm just wondering how it's implemented. Is implemented in terms of part of your assessments, surveys, to figure out where the class stands to begin with? I just want to know, I don't know anything about the implementation, and I'm very curious.
So I could certainly bring information regarding the components of social-emotional learning. I think we're at an awareness stage right now. That's why the goal was to start with the district leadership team and doing a book study. Some of the schools are further ahead, and some of the classrooms are further ahead, so they are engaging in professional development. At the end of this year, we'll have school-based goals for this work to take place across the district, and then we'll be offering during our in-service days, components for the teachers components for the teachers, as well as going next year, continued work in SEL for classroom educators. So is it something that happens in the classroom? Absolutely, they're the ones dealing with the kids.
Okay, for clarification, so you're saying it's not in the classrooms yet? We're still at the developmental stage?
I said awareness stage.
Aware, okay. So what book is it that they're reading? Could we read that also if you gave us the title?
I can get you the title, sure.
Okay. But it's not implemented this year because we're still developing it? Is that my understanding?
I would certainly hope that there's an ongoing recognition from all levels of the need to work with kids on their social-emotional wellness, from their ability to make good decisions, understand their emotions, and regulate their emotions and make quality decisions. So while there may be levels of learning happening across the district, there is an awareness, broad awareness effort at the administrative level right now.
Okay, if the chair is indulgent, I would ask that we have that on the agenda at some point. I'm trying to understand how, I mean, I know in the past, they've always had courtesy and various things and politeness in a class, but it wasn't a program that was being put in? So I'm just trying to understand why it's got this title and what exactly we're using. I just want to understand if parents come and ask me because right now, it's just a title and it seems to be very popular. So I want to fully understand what it is.
I think that would be helpful because-
Right.
-there's some misunderstandings out there. And it's not a program. It's how we interact with kids and build-
So it's a philosophy-
You know, positive and productive young adults. And I would ask that when people engage in questions about that, you certainly let the administration know so we can respond to some of those questions and concerns.
And play-based learning is similar. Did the staff attend the workshops in August that were at the department? Are they getting any training? Could you also present something to the board so we can see how it's changing to implement play-based learning in kindergarten?
Yep, as I stated at my last meeting, I went to Concord. I went to the training. I shared that information with the kindergarten teachers. There is a presentation scheduled in November. And as I said to the chair, I'll be presenting at the next meeting regarding more information on play-based learning.
Okay.
Oh, in October, right?
Yes, ma'am.
So could you do both of those topics in one night? Or is it too lengthy for-
I'll start doing my homework. I can handle it.
I'm sure you can. I just don't want to over, go over our time limit, okay? Very condescending of that. Anything else?
And my last question is on the focus areas in middle school. You're talking about competency-based education. It just reminded me, I'm curious to when the board is going to get a presentation on the grading, the evidence and the data, how the competency-based grading is improving the learning of our students so we can make, you know, database-driven decision-making when it comes to the middle school? Because you're not implementing the grading yet. It's got to, the board asked the administration to bring that information before we made that decision.
If you could just clarify, was that made by this current board or a previous board?
It was the previous board, but it wasn't rescinded. So it was assumed that it would have, the administration, not always the superintendent necessarily, but the people involved in the high school in implementing it would be working on that?
I would ask the board to speak with the chair and the president on a direction that you would like to see the superintendent report back on because there could be a number of things that previous boards have asked for and I'm not necessarily going to go back and look at all of those things. We're just looking to move forward. So if the state of New Hampshire is asking school districts to be competency-based, I would hope that we can move in that direction. So if that is a request of this board, again, I'd ask to make that request formal by going through the chair and the board president.
The competency-based education is required, the grading is not required? The state of Maine just reversed it and took it out. So it is a new thing, it is a pilot thing, it is something, as a board member, I feel like we should keep our finger on the pulse, see how it's working for us. Maybe it's working better than it's working for students in Maine, maybe, maybe not. But it seems irresponsible not to monitor it and that's what the previous board voted on. And this board didn't vote to rescind anything. If the previous board developed and approved a policy, this new board doesn't go back and say, "Well, all of those policy changes are for naught, we start over." It's not like we start with a clean slate. So unless the board has reversed it, I assumed that request was still in motion. I don't know what the chair thinks because it was from curriculum that the request was made.
Would you be so kind as to send me an email on the topic? Because I kind of missed some of it, of what you're requesting here. And then I'll pursue that for you.
Okay, it was when David Murtake was chair.
Yeah, well, we'll probably have to go back and look at the minutes of the meeting.
It's in the motions. We made a motion.
Motions, okay.
There's two motions that we made.
And you weren't just referring to the middle school?
It was the middle school. They were-
Middle school was put on hold as far as the grading was concerned.
Exactly, and because of that motion, it was put on hold.
Yeah, that has to happen. We don't have a grading like we do for the elementary and the high school for middle school. That was, they were put on hold to do any further investigating of how they were going to do the report cards and all that, so.
So Madam Chair, you and the members of the committee need to decide when that's going to happen? And is it going to happen at the next meeting in addition to or in lieu of the other agenda items that you spoke to?
Well, it'll take its in-order. You know, it'll be later, probably November, December before.
I'd kindly request that it be moved to the October meeting. If we're going to gauge in professional learning, we need an opportunity to get advance notice and not delay any further.
For the October meeting and put the other two at the November meeting?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Yes, Ms.-
Is that going to be a presentation to the board as we requested with those two motions? I don't understand what we're getting in October now. Because we requested that they bring us data evidence that competency-based grading is improving learning in the high school before we implement it in the middle school. Those were the motions.
All right, I'll do some investigating on that and I'll get back to you, Dr. McKinney.
Okay, thank you.
It sounds like a big topic.
I didn't want to burden him to bring that immediately. I wanted to give him time to put that together, that's all.
Well, are you-
I'm done, thank you.
Mr. Kaufman.
Thank you, Dr. McKinney, that was a good presentation. I do have some questions, though. ELL is K through 12, correct?
Why are you asking?
Well, you mentioned ELL in your presentation and I didn't know personally, did not recall, if ELL shows itself in the beginnings in kindergarten all the way up to 12? Or where do we have ELL instruction? Maybe I'll just ask the question that way, what grades?
I would say grades 1 to 12.
1 to 12, okay. Okay. And then where you made reference, I numbered the pages, so it's page five. It's a focus area, the list that starts with preschool.
Uh huh.
I'll let you get there. This page, and you haven't mentioned the library. So it says standards-based grading. Could you explain what you, what is entailed with that?
Most of the elementary UAs and K-5 teachers are revisiting standards-based grading, both from a practice point of view and knowledge because it's been a number of years, as well as speaking to some of the new applications that are being acquired, so.
So this is elementary-focused?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. I was trying to understand where. And right underneath that, you have a bullet point about CTE monitoring, joint department meetings. I'm curious, you mentioned that special ed and I'll have a question about that in a second. Does an evaluation from the state with recommendations and all? Does CTE programs also, can we get copies, please, of whatever the CTE monitoring from the state might be, as well as the similar kind of document from the regarding special ed department? So those are two separate things. Copies of the state-provided evaluation documents, whatever they are. I don't know if I'm calling them the right thing.
You want all 100 pages? Or would you like the summary?
Both, it's fine. I'm thinking it's an electronic document.
I was going to say, how about electronically?
Yeah, no need to print. And that's what search is for. If you've got a topic you want to drill down. So that takes care of that. And then you mentioned X-2 and the secretary is getting a bunch of training, amongst others, paraprofessionals. I'm curious if there's any plans on the part of the district to reevaluate the use of X-2 and find an alternative? And again, my concern goes to the grade book is now going to be separate, at least for elementary. We'll see where, what is it, Teacher E's if it finds its way into the district. And we have the double cost then with X-2, which is the database. I would like to see the direction move to a single piece of software that does what we need for both requirements. So my question to you is, are there any plans for the district to find a replacement for X-2 that has the kind of grade book you want? That does the database and the grade book?
Not at this time. The effort behind that is to have consistent data entry across the district, K-12. So from the moment a student registers to the moment they leave the district, whatever records are there need to be accurate moving across the district.
So, but from a budget point of view, I believe you're going to end up doubling the cost. Right now, we spend about $100,000 a year on X-2. I believe Teacher E's will take off. Great, software, everybody's going to be happy with the grade book. That's $120,000. You've just doubled our software cost for student database and grading system. So I think at some point, and maybe Ms. Porter, just to ask the strategic planning committee to look at this, that has to be something that we look at because if we have to come up with another $120,000 in that budget, something else is going to have to be cut. So I'm, just hate to be the face of reality, but that's just the way it is. Ms. Vantor, I asked my question about budgeting professional development. But you don't recall the amounts either in Title II or the operating budget? Do you have an aggregate in mind? I mean, just a ballpark? I don't want you to say anything that you really think is out of whack, but-
Mr. Kaufman, it's a long day. I'm not going to try to pull a number out of the air. I know the dues and memberships that we paid for, Learning Forward is not a huge amount. I'd have to go back and look at PD numbers overall. It's program improvement services.
That would be helpful if you could come back to us with that, please. And I did want to ask, since you mentioned it, by my calculation, it seems to be small money. It's about $1,600, just a little over $1,000 for a school district with 10 or more schools, plus $35 a school. Hopefully, my math was right. I did 18 schools. So is Brentwood typical, or are the instructors at Brentwood getting any professional development? Everything there was, you know, it's K-12, but are those folks included? Are there any special things that they need? Is that what a crisis prevention would be of value to those folks? I'm just trying to understand.
Yeah.
Because in the past, it seemed Brentwood, it was geographically separate and we thought about it separately. And now that it's in town, I would like to see us more embrace it and make sure that we're absolutely doing things. The last thing I had-
Can I respond to that?
Sure, please.
My operating understanding or practice is we have an open-door policy. So if a parent wants to come on an in-service day and attend all the PD, terrific. If you're at Brentwood and you want to engage in social-emotional learning, you're more than welcome.
But that invitation goes to everybody, I guess is really what the question is.
Sorry?
That invitation goes to everyone. It's not grade-specific. In other words, this is a course for K through 5 or whatever. Or these are focused on the middle school. So if someone would, someone in Brentwood, if they had an interest in that crisis prevention and was offered in the middle school, not the high school because we don't know the schedule, they would still be able to attend? They have as much flexibility?
Yeah, in fact, most of the CPI training does take place at this school. So it's likely that most of them are trained already, but it-
Okay.
There's always exceptions to the rule.
So I have two questions, if I may, Ms. Vantor. You mentioned that the, this standards for professional learning. You spoke specifically that they help develop teacher evaluations and the rubrics used for those evaluations. Did I understand you correctly?
Say that one more time.
That this organization as well, and I'm sure internally, that the, you said that the teacher evaluations were conducted based on rubrics. And those rubrics were in part developed as, you know, from the standards of the Professional Learning Association. I got that you tied those two things together, so.
So just for clarity, the teacher development evaluation system, we call it TDEC, is a subcommittee of the PDMP. Their work is specific on basically the Marshall evaluation model that was in place or he designed and we made it our own. So they have designed all the teacher development rubrics and evaluation rubrics that are in the district right now. Anything, any of their work that they would want to bring forward, they have to bring it to the PDMP group and it gets approved there. So for example, a number of years ago, when the rubric first came out, it was 50-something criteria. They condensed a number of areas in that rubric and got it down to about half the size. And then they brought the work to the PDMP and then it's been in place now for a year or two. So most of the work we do is for a year ahead because by the time it takes them to complete the work and present to the PDMP, we wait until the following school year to put all those things in place. So for another example, this year, the special education group, after having PD during the admin institute, the directors and assistant directors want to meet with a group, a cohort of special educators to revisit their rubrics. They're going to do so during the course of this year, bring it to TDEC, then breeding it to PDMP, and then hopefully with the goal next year, that would go online live.
Okay, so I'm happy to hear this. So they're essentially homegrown, approved through a formal process and implemented usually the next, for the next school year? That's good. So I do have a question, though. And teachers get evaluated every, if a teach, and hopefully I get this right. If you're new to the district, they're provisional for up to five years where they get reviewed every year. And then we either renew their contract or not and they either continue in the district or not. That's just the easiest way. But once a teacher has been here for five years, they get an evaluation that's every three years, formal evaluation, structured. Now, are rubrics used in that evaluation?
On the formal, on their third year?
Yes, on the third year.
Yes.
Okay. And on those intervening, and I think all the other times, there's, and I'll get this number wrong, 10 or some number of what are called mini-evaluations or-
Mini-observations.
Mini-observations. Are rubrics used in those? Okay. So we had us, we had a presentation, a non-public presentation before the board, where at the time, we were told that the rubrics were not being used in the evaluations for the minis. So I'm just, was that an oversight? Was that just a particular person doing the evaluation? Or it wasn't an assistant principal, it was a director? So is it intended that there are rubrics for the mini-observations?
So I just want to be clear. You're telling me that there was a case that came that mini-observations were being conducted, not referencing back to a rubric for that-
Yes.
-category of an employee?
Yes.
I'm not aware of that practice, but strange-
So that's an outlier? The intent is that it should be, even the mini-observations are, have rubrics that structure the evaluation?
Right, because the goal of the rubrics is to have an objective measure that you're going against. Otherwise, you know, all of us could go look at one classroom and come out with 10 different things. So all of those have been done in an effort to keep consistency and that's why we have that group that meets on a regular basis. That's why we have the summer admin. That's why we have a consultant that works with us, all to, you know, keep us consistent in that work because regardless, we should be coming out with the same sort of ratings.
No, I agree. So that's why I was happy to hear that the intent is that rubrics drive not only the three-year evaluation, but also the mini-observations. And I'm sure the annuals as well. So thank you, those are all the questions I had. Thank you, Ms. Vantor.
You're welcome. We've been doing mini-observations for at least four years or more. When Kim Marshall came, I remember that very well. Do you feel that the teachers are more receptive to this type of observation and feel that it's more beneficial to them? That they, it's a real learning experience for them and not a dreadful experience for them?
I believe so on the most part. You know, it's, I think we've grown in our practice. I certainly think when we started, there was a larger number of both the areas of the rubric to evaluate and the number of mini-observations. And now that they've become in a, you know, just right amount- in a, you know, just right amount for teachers and administrators, I do think they see the value in it because I think it brings teachers and admin closer together. You get a true snapshot of teacher and student performance. You can carry those over the course of a year, either look at a single content area or strategy, or you can get a picture of everybody's practice in, you know, a broader picture over the course of the year. So, you know, do we have work to do? Yeah. That's why we engage in these committees and have a consultant work with us. But I do think for the most part-
Well, some people are more receptive to that than, that type of evaluation than others. Constructive evaluation, I think it builds such a, a better relationship between the principal or who was ever doing the evaluations and the teachers, that they're partners. They're not threatening them. They're just going in there to help them to make a better teacher out of them. I know that my public speaking group, that's what, that's the approach that we took, is that our evaluations of you are to help you, not to threaten you or to point out, you know, hey, you're bad or anything like that, you know?
I don't think the, sorry.
Yep, go ahead.
I would agree with you. I don't know if the gotcha game works the best. I think the challenge that TDEC committee comes with is there is a part where we ask teachers to self-reflect over the course of the year and then bring that self-reflection to their evaluation conference at the end and be willing to share with an administrator. I don't know if those are two steps that all teachers engage in because we believe in a growth mindset. We believe reflection's the way to growth. And for some teachers, if they're not willing to self-analyze and self-reflect on their practice, it's kind of a challenge. So they go back and forth in terms of making that optional or making it a requirement. That's a debate that's been happening. But for me, as an AP in the district, I always found those that are most willing to put it on the table, here are the areas I'm really solid in, here are the ones I want to get better at, and then what can we do together to make it happen? And I would just hope that practice continues to evolve.
Yes, I do, too. I think it's the most civilized wave of growing, that when you're looking at yourself. And people know when, what, what they're lacking, I think. The harder on themselves than most people are. You mentioned that there would be some professional people brought in to do workshops. Did I understand that correctly? And how many of those do you think you're going to use this year? And are they pricey?
Mm-hmm.
Because I remember attending one myself at North that I wouldn't have paid 50 cents for, let alone as much money as they did, so.
So that is one of the challenges for that November day. I do speak to the presenters for that day with the understanding, if sessions aren't full or at a large attendance, that we would be canceling sessions. And I would not be compensating those outside presenters to engage in intimate setting for a small group of educators. So they do have an understanding for that. So I do try to maximize and get value for all of that. I think, again, meeting with that PDMP group today, it's a challenge because I know teachers are busy and they have a lot going on. But I, you know, I would implore them to help us by filling out the forms, registering in advance, giving notice to your administration so that we know where you want to go and what you want to do so that we don't take away from those opportunities. But, because I would hate to take that away from somebody. But in the end, you're right. We do have a fiscal responsibility to make the most out of that money that we have. And, you know, somebody like Mike Anderson, who presented on opening day, has been in the district before. I, I learn something from him every time. I would like to see more and more people engage and learn from him because he's very knowledgeable and he's a nice guy, which is a nice combo.
Very well. Any other questions for this topic? Yes, Ms. Raymond?
Thank you. The question about competency-based grading kind of made me think about the NEAS accreditation for South. And I recall when they were here, they were specifically asking and looking at competency-based grading. And they were going to have a report sometime over the summer, maybe? And I'm just curious if, first of all, if, if that has come in. And then secondly, if that would answer some of the questions that it sounds like this committee had in the past about how is competency-based grading working for us? So I guess my question is, one, do we have it? And two, would it answer that question?
I'll look into that. But can you address that at all?
Yeah, I will consult-
That's not your area, really, but-
No. But I'll ask Ms. Fitzpatrick and Mr. Richard around a report and, you know, any insights from that report regarding the question that was posed.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Mr. Kaufman?
I don't, I don't, I don't think we saw it. So that would be something else that would be helpful to share with the board, the complete report. I mean, we all came in on a Sunday to participate on that. So we actually have skin in the game for that one.
Okay. So anything else? Then the next two topics I am both very interested in. Oh, teaching cursive writing. And I thought the other question was sign language, but here it says handwriting. I thought the other topic, I think that was Mr. Guarino's recommendation that he would like to see if there would be a course on, excuse me?
Sign language.
Hand signals, sign language, thank you.
Yeah. Madam Chair, I just asked that we put that on the next agenda. I didn't get a chance to speak to Mrs. Bagley. So, but I can't bring that information to the next meeting.
Okay. And the other one was vaping. I don't know whether that got pushed off into policy or whether that was supposed to be tonight, too, and that didn't make it. And that, Mrs. Oden's, you know, she wants to know about that vaping and whether there needs to be something added to maybe to the behavior policy or not. I don't know. So let's go on to teaching cursive writing, which I love. And what do we do in this district? And how come we can't, yeah, huh? Let's do some more of it.
So I know there was a gentleman, Mr. Richard, I believe is his name, who came and spoke and had concerns around cursive writing. And I reached out to our curriculum team and the principals. And so the update on that is there is cursive writing instruction happening in the district. Unfortunately, I would say it's inconsistent. We have some grade levels, mainly grades two and three, that are engaging in that right now. So in the end, we're inconsistent. So what I would like to see happen is that we have an opportunity to have a broader conversation with the curriculum team and think about how to make this manageable in the curriculum. There's only so much time in the day and our elementary teachers have a lot of things on their plate. And to, in 2018, to bring cursive handwriting, writing into the day with formal instruction, you're, you're probably going to be taking from something else because there's only so many minutes in the day. I certainly understand Mr. Richard's concern in regards to being able to sign your name, be able to read handwriting, understand maybe the history or historical documents, where it came from. And that's why I just like an opportunity to meet with that team and come out with a recommendation that both works in terms of our curriculum, but also is manageable for the teachers in those grade levels. Because I've had, I had some that use it as a choice piece during their writing instruction that kids can engage in cursive. Others have more formal instruction. Others just have a little mini lesson in terms of a piece that may tie in with social studies. And, you know, I can remember my father teaching me how to sign my, my signature and have some character behind it. So we have a range of practices in place. We have a range of inconsistencies. And I think we just need to bring some realistic expectation to what that would look like. Because with the ever increasing demands of accountability, our curriculum, the needs of our kids, what's the best way to ask that to happen in our classrooms? Because Lucy Cawkins has really taken hold in the district and our kids are producing more and more writing than I've seen in the past. I just wouldn't want the, the pressure or the, you know, of having to produce everything in cursive be a part of that as well. So I think we just have some working and refinement to do in terms of coming to a recommendation that fits for our kids in those grade levels.
I, I just wonder how, how lawyers can verify that you signed a piece of paper if you, if you can't write in cursive. How do they know that your handwriting is different? I mean, you'd have to bring in a handwriting analysis on printing to be able to decide where he did-
I hope we're not doing that. I'm just trying to get ahead on sign language. So I wouldn't want to bring in handwriting experts.
Yeah, well, I, I just wonder about that because that's, to me, the most important thing is, is to be able to protect yourself as far as I did sign this or I didn't sign that or whatever.
And I think, you know, to your-
But how much time, you know, how much time do they, the grades two and three a week, would you say? I understand that there are a lot of inconsistencies and it probably may take a few years to get a standard policy over the district, you know, of writing cursive. I think I might go and get it put into the state law that you have to teach it if it's not there already, but.
It's all over the place. I didn't bring it with me. It varies from place to place. I don't think it's something that's consistent. I certainly think, you know, there are, been teachers who have asked to kind of put it in social studies with civics and why you sign your name, the symbolic nature of your name, the documents that have been signed and why they're important to our government and society. And then there's others who want, you know, I've taught cursive and how challenging it is and the time commitment. So I just, you know, we talk about the SEL needs of our kids. I, in my heart, I also have that for teachers because they do a lot with a little and, you know, they're not always raising their hand to put more on their plate. So what are some meaningful and productive ways we can find a way to tie this into our curriculum?
Even those people who, English is not their language. I, I tutored a woman who didn't read cursive. And when I started to write out something for her, and she's, oh, no, no, not cursive. You've got to print it. And I realized, you know, hey, she couldn't read what I was trying to tell her. And besides the fact, I do believe it's an art form also, that beautiful handwriting is quite an attribute to have. Okay. So Ms., I think I saw two hands over here. Ms. Porter and then Ms. Raymond, thank you.
I think as far as teaching cursive, I know that when I was a kid, there was more time. But now we have computer classes, which we didn't previously have. So I think that some of the time in the day is taken up by teaching that. I think that our goal is having kids be career and college ready. And I think that we have to kind of prioritize the things we want for when our kids are graduating. Is it going to be more important to spend the time on, for example, computer skills or cursive writing? I mean, these are hard choices that we have to make because there are only so many hours in the day. Also, moving forward, I know that a lot of contracts and things are, like e-signatures are coming in. I think that technology is changing. And we don't know, if we have a kindergartner now, when they graduate, what the world will be. But it seems to be moving into a more paperless type of service. So, you know, I think that it's good to be able to sign your name in cursive. And I think that most teachers might have, I know that I always had a name plate on kids' desks with their name written in cursive so that they could see it and have a cursive alphabet on the name plate. That's pretty common. But I think that I like Dr. McKinney's idea to bring that back and to have a really full conversation before we would make a decision on this.
Well, I would recommend that, too.
Yeah.
But I think it's far more important to be able to read the Constitution of the United States than working on a computer. Computer skills can be picked up at any time. I, so I assume that cursive could be picked up at any time also. But I think it's more important, very important. Ms. Raymond?
Well, you know, it's interesting that you say that because I, you know, initially, I was thinking if it came down to teaching kids to code versus teaching them cursive, I would want coding. But I'm wondering, as this is investigated, if learning cursive is like learning a language where there is a developmental time where it is easiest to pick it up? Because I know right now, we start languages in high school, but the research is very clear that it's easier to pick it up the younger you are. So I'm curious if that's the case with cursive. For me, I'm young enough that everything is typed and been typing forever. But when I was pursuing, you know, secondary education, note-taking was in cursive because writing in cursive is more efficient to write things quickly. So for me, as we're having students engage in more writing, which I think is fantastic, and especially the, the way that we're doing it, which is more content-based, I'm wondering if there's been any evaluation or analysis of whether or not it is perhaps more efficient for our kids, especially because we're not really teaching typing in the elementary ages. They're still handpicking, you know, in, in third grade, if perhaps cursive might help with that. So I would love to see when the team looks at it and they come back, what they have to say.
Two over here, Mr. Kaufman and then Ms. Ohensy.
Thank you. I also think that it's, it's useful because the hand-eye coordination, developmentally, helps the young kids as they develop. I'm sure they could pick it up later, but I think it's a great benefit for the younger kids. I'm wondering if these various different ways of presenting cursive in the different schools, is that school-based? Like each principal sets the tone and each, like I know with recess before or after lunch, that was a school-based decision. Is a cursive right now, at the level we're doing it, a school-based decision?
No, it's not.
Okay. So and it's not a district one, so it's just sort of haphazard?
It's inconsistent, yes.
Okay. Just as a suggestion, before we, you know, design or develop or require anybody to do something, maybe we might want to encourage the schools in the elementary grade, those grades, to have a contest on cursive so that they evaluate, whether it's trying to write part of the Constitution, just writing their name like John Hancock, or whatever device that they come up with to make, just to motivate the kids. I just thought that might be fun because right now, many don't see a use for it. So if we can find a use or maybe, maybe just decoding, you know, how you give kids puzzles and find the word in this box of letters. Well, decode this, you know, somehow we've got to make it real for them. So I just thought maybe some thought would be given in that direction so they would be motivated from within.
Mr. Kaufman?
Thanks. I have two things. The first thing is, I was just thinking, do, do younger grades have summer school available to them?
In what regard?
Summer programs. What I'm thinking, maybe you could do a cursive workshop over the summer.
Yeah, that'd be fun, huh?
You know, it's, I realize that time is a premium and there's choices of curriculum that have to be made. But I think it's valuable enough, we have to be creative to figure out a way of getting it in there. And the second thing was, out of respect to Mrs. Oden and Ms. Porter, we have at, at least 50 years of experience between you, and I imagine it's probably more, teaching elementary school. So I'm curious, as teachers who've been in the classroom, who I, I believe have probably taught cursive over your careers, I'm curious to know the time commitment that you've observed over time. Is it, is it a two-month thing and then you get on to the next thing and you just reinforce it? I don't want to, I just want you to please share with us what your experience is. How, how long does it take for your kids to pick it up? Is it a whole year? Is it a semester? Is it one trimester? I don't even know how the elementary schools are broken up. So if either or both of you could weigh in on that, I would appreciate it.
I did teach cursive. I taught, when I, I first taught in Connecticut, we designed our own, we were traditional. And then we went to Zainab Blozer, which is a handwriting program that was used in Nashville when we were teaching it. It is time-consuming, especially in the beginning. But it's individualized. Some students pick it up a lot faster than others. But quite frankly, what I found is most children wanted to learn it because they felt it was like a, a magic thing that they had the code to when they understood forming the letters in cursive. It was sometimes very time-consuming when they wanted to write in cursive because they, they couldn't recall how to make certain letters. So it, it slowed down in their writing. And this was in second grade. I, I, I never taught third grade, so I don't know how, how the students there, if you started in third grade. It was strange. I found that many students who had a hard time printing, that had messy printing, had very nice cursive. It was, it was interesting to see the development. Thank you.
I'll just- It's an art form.
Um, it, it is time-consuming because you want to be sure to establish good habits. You don't want the kids to be practicing. So it does take a lot of, um, teacher involvement to just make sure that they're forming the letters correctly so that they are establishing the proper procedures at the beginning. So it can be, um, time-consuming in the time that it takes kids to practice and the time that you need to have an adult looking at them to make sure that they're, um, learning the correct way. So, you know, once they've got those basics, I mean, kids do like it. They think it's fun. Little ones think it's very grown-up, you know, they want to, um, but it does, it does take a good amount of time. And if you're looking at, you know, it's just a time allocation thing and I would not want to make a board decision on that without extensive input from, um, teachers because I know that, uh, the day is finite and there's only so much time. And, uh, there are probably lots of things we wish we had time for, um, that we don't, but if, you know, so it's a larger conversation, I would say.
And they don't teach it past third grade, do they? Or did they, I guess?
Um, I've taught it in fifth grade.
In fifth grade?
I have, in fourth and fifth grade, depending on the year, depending on the kids, how much time I have them. A lot of times I would have kids do their final copy if they wanted to, um, in cursive. Sometimes if we had, uh, um, a particular project that was about some time period back in history, they would make an art presentation, you know, some sort of a, a journal or presentation and they would write it in cursive on tea-stained paper and make it look like, you know, a primary document. So, I mean, so as a fifth-grade teacher, there are ways to, um, incorporate it. But if they haven't learned the foundations of it, sometimes their writing can be a little bit funky, but.
Well, every time I get a letter from bicentennial inviting me to their graduation, it's always in, in printed and I always think, gee, I really would like to see that in, in cursive writing, but. Okay, anything else? Oops, Mr. Coffin again.
Just for clarification, I, I, it seems to me from the conversation, it's something we definitely want to have, uh, researched, evaluated and some kind of recommendation or plan on how it could be implemented or not. At least that's my understanding. At least that's what I would like to see, is that general agreement? That that's what's going to happen? Is there a timeframe when, Dr. McKinney, you might get back to this committee as to when, um, you've looked at this and you have a recommendation?
Uh, that's, I would direct your questions to the board chair. You could put it on the list and we'll schedule a meeting, but yes, the-
Well, how long-
My understanding is that I would come back with a recommendation from the curriculum team.
Yeah, just how long will it take you to get the curriculum? I mean, you must have other subject matters. You're talking with them.
Uh, we do have a number of things we're talking about and cursive wasn't one of them before that, but, um, you know, you have some other things that we spoke about here, so I think if we had an opportunity to, uh, connect, we could prioritize and, um, certainly get these done by the end of the year.
That's what I was thinking, by maybe Christmas present.
A follow-up to that?
Yes.
If, if the board were to get your recommendation by the end of the year and decide that we want cursive implemented, if a decision were made in December, could it be implemented for the following school year?
For, um, 1920?
Yeah.
Yeah, 1920.
In other words, if, if a decision was made at the end of this calendar year, mid-semester, mid-year for us, would that give you adequate time to, uh, adjust the curriculum, wherever you decide to put it, for the following school year?
I'm not going to make any promises in terms of what's going to happen next year. At the elementary level, the, the priority right now is, um, the literacy pilot and evaluation of materials for, um, reading workshop, including, um, mini lessons, word study, guided reading and independent reading. So, um, I understand this gentleman's concerns and I, I certainly want to get back to him, you know, but this is, um, uh, one perspective and I certainly understand the perspective of everyone here. Um, but in terms of, uh, goals for next year in language arts, that certainly is a major priority along with the continuation of Lucy Cawkins.
May I follow up, Ms. Van Tuyver?
Yes.
Thank you. So I understand that you have a plan for next year. Right now, there's, what, six of us? And I think in the re, the feedback that I got was the kids liked it, they felt accomplished. We feel it's necessary for civics and understanding was incorporated into academics. What I'm trying to suggest to you is the board may very well decide that we want it implemented. So my question, I'll just kind of ask it in another way. If we were to review this in November and accelerate it into this committee, would you then have enough time to plan and implement it for the following school year? I want to understand when, when, when's the latest the board could make a decision that you could plan for? So if we directed you, the board voted to include cursive in elementary education and maybe said what grades it might be or by a certain grade, that the administration would have a chance to accomplish that without pain. So the earlier we have the report, the earlier we make our decision, the earlier, if there is a board decision, you have more time to implement it. So help us help you, please.
Madam Chair, I would kindly ask the members of this committee to provide direction. If they were going to bring this forth to the entire board and then the board could make a motion and vote on it and then provide direction to the superintendent, who in turn would ask me or anyone in the district to move forward with this piece. It's not, um, feasible to, uh, take direction from individuals across the district. So I would ask kindly that this board, um, or this committee with your leadership, take a vote or provide a motion to move us forward. Um, it's challenging to try to meet different perspectives and different pieces here. Um, if that's the will of the board and the board follows its governance and moves it from this committee to the greater board and then directs the superintendent, I will make every effort to carry it forth. Thank you.
Guarantee you that will happen that way, Dr. McKinney. Um, just a moment, please. It is understood that the board has to approve all changes in, in direct, uh, education. That's their responsibility to do that. So, I mean, if you have something by the end of the year, then, you know, we would, and this committee agrees to it and would like to put it forward, what your results are, then we take it to the full board and then the full board will vote on it and then take it to the, I mean, they, it's, it, it depends upon the district's, um, ability, uh, time-wise and whatever, to implement something. I mean, I, we understand that you just can't turn things around overnight. Uh, this ship is too big for that. So, I mean, I can guarantee you from my point of view that that's the way it will happen. We're not going to ask you to do something that, uh, the board hasn't approved of.
I would just ask that we, at some point, have a conversation, just like we have here in this presentation, of focus areas and priorities because we can only provide key focus on certain areas. And if there's, um, our end game is to have kids' career and college ready, uh, I would ask, how does this fit into that piece here along with all the other things that are happening in the district? Because, um, there's only finite time, finite resources, finite personnel and, um, from all my professional readings, you get the most bang for your buck when we're invested in a few simple key priorities that are trans, um, are communicated across the district. So, um, I would just ask that we keep that in mind as we move forward. Thank you.
Yep. Ms. Porter?
Um, given all the, uh, the good work that's going on in schools right now in language arts, math, science and social studies, um, this to me is not a high priority and I'm, I mean, I'm not, I don't, I'm not a cursive hater, but, um, I, I don't see this as taking precedence over any of the things that we have going on. I know that, um, part of our, uh, part of what we want to be really aware of is not putting too many initiatives forward. We want to do fewer things well. Um, and for me, this doesn't make the top 10. So I, while I can speak for cursive and, you know, kids like cursive, um, I'm, I'm not in favor of putting this on the fast track.
Well, I hope that you'll keep an open mind and listen and wait-
I'm keeping an open mind, yeah.
And wait until the committee comes back with a, a recommendation or whatever. One of the hardest things for this, for a member of the Board of Education is to understand all the things that are going on in the district at the same time. We never have the global picture. And you hear something this time and then, uh, later you hear another thing and then the first one is gone and, and it's very difficult. I've been on this board seven years and I have difficulty being able to tell you all the initiatives that are going on in, in the district. So, um, I hope you keep that in mind too, that, uh, we don't always get all the information, that we need to make a decent decision. Um, but I do think it's very important that kids learn cursive, uh, and I know that you don't feel that way. I don't think that electronic or, uh, signatures are going to be, uh, the thing of the future. I would never, never take one. I've seen a couple of signatures that, uh, doesn't mean anything to me. I think everything would have to be authorized, uh, by some, I've witnessed this, you know, someone's signature, but anyhow. So is there anything else on this topic? Mr. Coffin, please.
Thank you, Ms. Van Tuyver.
This is your last one though, okay?
That's fine. I, I just, uh, would ask the chair, uh, to perhaps make a motion so to bring this issue out of this committee, a recommendation, let the committee vote on it, make a recommendation, this committee, to, the committee recommends that the administration conduct this evaluation and bring it back within some period of time so we can accelerate this. Uh, I don't think we should wait until the end of the year for the report. I think the sooner the board, the administration seems to be, and rightly so, asking for board direction on this. It's a big deal. But I think the sooner we get the information, the sooner the board can have, to, to make a request or not of the district to implement it. So I would just ask perhaps yourself, I'm not a voting member of the committee, but that the committee consider a motion to bring this forward to the school board, recommending that cursive be evaluated for inclusion in the next, uh, school year.
Well, um-
And pending the results of that evaluation and a discussion of the recommendations.
Right.
But that's up to you, to your committee.
Yeah, but, thank you very much. I'm glad you agree with that because I think Dr. McKinney is an honorable man and if he says that he could bring something back and, and he knows his, his, uh, day better, that, uh, he can probably do that, then that's fine. We also have to have the results of the, um, SAS presented. So we've only got three more committee, uh, committee meetings by the end of the year. So I think that it would be just nice enough to allow him some time to do that. And, uh, yes, Mr. Coffin?
What I thought I understood from Dr. McKinney was that he's really waiting for the board to direct him to do the research. Not that it would be done prior, you were, I, what I thought I heard you say is you would appreciate the board directing, directing you of our interest in this matter. And I took that to mean that you wouldn't perform this research as we spoke of. And I just want to make sure it happens. And to your point about wanting board direction, I'm trying to give you the earliest possible direction from the board. The board may kill it and then you don't have to do your report. So that's just why I'm asking that the committee bring something forward. Let the board decide if they want Dr. McKinney to do this research on cursive. If so, then we'll have a time window. If not, it's done, it's dead, it's over.
Um, Dr. McKinney, is that what you would like to see? Would you like this committee to make a motion that's brought forth before the full board for you to just undertake the curriculum people to do the study or to address the problem? Did I get that? Did I confuse you?
Yeah, I'm just trying to hear you over the, um, passing, um, traffic.
Oh.
What are my options again? I'm sorry.
Well, uh, would you like us, you, you, before you said that you would want to make sure that the, you know, this goes through the right channels here to actually implement it. But would you want a motion from this committee to undertake the study with the curriculum people about the cursive situation and that go to the full board to authorize you to go ahead and do that study? Or are, are you willing to just go ahead and, and go to the curriculum people and talk about it? And then come back and talk to us in December about it and then we go forward with whether we do, uh, you know, pursue it any further?
I, I believe, as I said in the beginning, I would like an opportunity to come back with a recommendation for the board. You know, I'm happy to do that, but, um, certainly with the understanding that there are competing priorities that we already spoke about tonight as well as previous ones as well. So addressing those as well would be, uh, important. But I think the part where the governance piece came in would be in terms of implementation, those would need to go through that procedural stuff. But I think I've shown in the past that when requests are made, I come back with the information.
Yes, I, you're an honorable man. I believe that you would do that.
Thank you, ma'am.
Um, all right, so this is the way I understand it, that you would, uh, take that topic and talk to your curriculum people about it to discuss what goes on now, how you could standardize or whatever. And then you'll come back in December to this committee and make that presentation. This committee will then consider whether we should take it to the full board for implementation. Is that understood by everybody? Because I don't want to get in any kind of a snarl here that we're forcing people to do something that, you know.
Just, could I just request December slash January? You have, you have SEL, Playbase, the competency piece, you want, um, update on the state assessment results. Um, there's vaping and there's, um, other requests that were included in your documentation, so. Not, not to say that it could be January, but given tonight, we came in with two things and we're leaving with a number of other ones, what else is going to happen between now and then, so.
Well, we'll try to keep it down.
Yes, ma'am.
But we always have creative minds, you know. All right, so let's use, you're going to get us a book title for the social-emotional training that you're used or are using?
Yes.
Yeah, so that's one thing. Well, do you have extra copies of the book?
No, ma'am.
Oh, okay. Try your, try amazon.com or your local library.
Uh, I can, I can give mine to the board president and you can share it around or I can bring it to a future meeting.
Yeah, give it to the, the Evelyn Wood people first, okay? Because I'm a slow reader and I forget to return books, so. Uh, then we're to go and I have to do some study on the competency-based grading, whatever it was that we talked about before last year or something. Uh, you had a request for the state CTE and SP, uh, sped, uh, monitoring reports that come to us electronically to this committee.
Mm-hmm.
You will provide a story at the end of the school year on learning forward results, the survey?
Uh, the results, yep.
The results, the survey results at the end of the school year, right? Because that's when, when it happens, correct? Um, and then you brought up the fact, or I brought up the fact that we still have to have the SAS, uh, results from last year, which I think are supposed to be available in October, but. So those are the things that I have down here as to-dos. Yes, Dottie?
I'm sorry, I just want to clarify on the vaping. I'd like to know how it's being addressed in the health curriculum and how policies are addressing the issue of vaping when students are caught vaping, the, both areas, okay?
Yeah, and whether it's a problem.
Thank you.
Dr. McKinney will get that. Okay, so next month, what do we decide upon? We're going to have, uh, jeez, I've already forgotten.
I had written down sign language.
Sign language, yeah.
On the to-do.
Yeah, but that was going to be grouped together with, um, well, I'll get back to you on, on what our topic is for next month. Social, emotional and, uh, play-based, that's, that's the one, the plays are, that new, um, law that came down from the gods on high and came through the Department of Education and put out that advisory that, uh, we need to know whether we're complying with. So those will be the two topics for next month. Okay, Mr. Dr. McKinney?
Yes, all set. Thank you.
All right. Anything else? How about a motion to adjourn?
I move to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
Oh.
I'm voting tonight, yeah.
Yes, that's right, but I thought you were the one that made the motion, but that's all right. You, you're twin, twin voices. So, um, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Okay, good night. Okay, good night.